Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for July 8th, 2024. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the Deputy City Manager please call the role of the members?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Snell.
President Larson.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Hoppy.
Present.
Deitz.
Here.
Ohm.
Here.
Dozeman.
Here.
And Hultein.
I'm present.
Thank you. May you have a court?
Thank you. Councilors, in your packet you have City Council meeting minutes for June 24 of 2024. Are there any corrections to be noted in the minutes? Seeing none, we'll let the minutes stand approved with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed as posted. We have a couple of proclamations tonight, so we'll go to the podium. We're pleased to have a proclamation here for Parks and Recreation Month, and I would like to invite our Parks Director Karen O'Donnell and all of the Parks and Recreation Department folks that are here and joining us online to come to the floor. Thank you all for being here. What a great group. We're really excited to have everybody here. We're going to get the wide-angle lens out for a photo op, so, you know, we're not that big, we'll have to, you know, squeeze together, but we'll figure out those logistics later. So this is a proclamation in support of Parks and Recreation Month, July 2024. Whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas this year's theme, Where You Belong, celebrates the many ways park and recreation professionals across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community by providing welcoming and inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe, accessible spaces to build meaningful connections. And whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improve the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas parks and recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are crucial to childhood development. And whereas parks and recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, education of the local tax base, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas our parks and recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, and the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Park and Recreation Month in the City of Wheat Ridge. I want to invite Director O'Donnell up with all of her colleagues. Here's, this is for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and City Council, and members of the community. I'm deeply honored to stand before you today to accept this proclamation in recognition of Parks and Recreation Month. This year's theme, Where You Belong, resonates profoundly with our desire to create welcoming and inclusive spaces where every member of our community feels a true sense of belonging. In Wheat Ridge, we are fortunate to have a wealth of beautiful parks and engaging programs that foster connections and enhance our quality of life. Throughout the month of July, we invite everyone to explore these wonderful outdoor spaces and participate in activities designed to embody the essence of belonging. Whether it's visiting your favorite park or discovering a new one, there are numerous opportunities to celebrate with us. Some of those that are free this month for Parks and Recreation Month include Zumba at Panorama Park on July 9th, Leave No Trace Education at Fruitdale Park on July 17th, Key Gong for 50-plus community members at Founder's Park on July 19th, Intro to Birding Nature Walk at Prospect Park on July 23rd, and performances in the park every Wednesday at Anderson Park with morning children's performances and evening performances for all ages. For every park visited in the month of July, residents are encouraged to complete an online form on our Rooted and Fund website to be entered to win fantastic prizes. Additionally, residents are encouraged to keep an eye out for our patron appreciation pop-ups happening at various locations this week. The theme Where You Belong is brought to life by the incredible team behind Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation. While I wish I could have the entire department here tonight, some of them are on vacation or playing softball, and I didn't want to make them, you know, come back from Mexico. But I'm grateful to be joined by several key individuals whose dedication and hard work make our community shine. When I say your name, if you can come up here, I think you're all familiar with YY Dennis, especially Council Member Hultein with her weekly happiness gardens updates. As you may recall from a recent council presentation, YY has done a tremendous job of taking happiness gardens to the next level, developing innovative partnerships and expanding programming. Next up, you may have read on social media that we're fully staffed in aquatics for the first time in years. That's worth applause. That's in large part due to the efforts of Sarah Heisdorfer, our aquatics supervisor, and Greg Scon, our pool manager. These two, these are two of the leaders creating culture where lifeguards thrive and offering opportunities for community members of all ages to enjoy aquatic programming in Wheat Ridge. Thank you, guys. All right. Our marketing specialist, Danielle Moore, is responsible for everything from written newsletters to social media content to creative videos highlighting trail safety, coming soon, and so much more. Danielle is extremely thoughtful and proactive and works with everyone in our department to ensure that we're always putting our best foot forward. Thank you, Danielle. Jim Spalding has been with our department since 1988, and he's set to retire soon if we let him. He serves as our athletics supervisor, juggling all of the scheduling, staffing, training, and planning involved in offering various sports to members of all ages here in Wheat Ridge. Jim is a true subject matter expert who approaches every situation with professionalism in a calm demeanor. Thank you, Jim. Megan Schmitz has served in various roles here in the City of Wheat Ridge. Currently, she is an Operation Support Technician 3, primarily serving Parks Forestry and Open Space Division. She's the one that makes sure our bills are paid, she tracks spending, communicates with residents, and keeps everything organized and running smoothly, and she's always willing to lend a helping hand. Thank you, Megan. All right. Joe Beazer and Dominic Grine are our Parks Maintenance Supervisors. They do have tremendous job of keeping our parks safe and keeping them looking top-notch. Also, a side note, Joe serves as the President of the Leonbaugh Ditch Company, so that's exciting. Thank you, guys. Danny Hayes is our Parks, our Manager of Parks Forestry and Open Space. He's been with us for almost a year and a half, and he's made tremendous improvements within his division. Most notably, he's positively impacted the culture, fostering an atmosphere of mutual respect. Additionally, his knowledge and expertise has brought fresh ideas and commitment to improvement. Beth June has joined us, coming straight from the Carnation Festival meeting. She has been with the city also for many years and has recently taken on the role of event and volunteer coordinator. Changes within the local works organization allowed for our department to take a larger role with citywide events. No doubt you've noticed the impact that she's made in a short period of time in this role. From our annual Board Commission and Volunteer Event, to the Holiday Event, to performances in the park, Beth's passion for her work truly shines through. In closing, I want to emphasize that Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation is truly a place where you belong. Our team is committed to creating spaces and programs that welcome everyone, fostering connections, and enhancing our community's well-being. As we celebrate Parks and Recreation Month, I encourage you all to join us exploring, participating, and experiencing the sense of belonging that our parks and programs provide. Thank you for this honor, and thank you to our incredible team and incredible community for making Wheat Ridge a place where we all belong. Sorry for the long speech.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, let's go ahead. The council likes to get in on the pictures, so follow Karen right around in front of the dais. We'll get some pictures. We have, we have great Parks in Wheat Ridge, and we have a great Parks and Rec Department, and thank you all for being part of it. Our next, we have a proclamation for the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, and I'd like to invite Mary Hester to join me up here at the podium. Thanks for coming tonight, Mary. Great to see you again. This is the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, July 8th, 2024. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species, whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas both the Western and Eastern monarch populations have seen a significant decline, with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by much as 90%. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge recognizes that human health ultimately depends upon well-functioning ecosystems, and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. And whereas every resident of Wheat Ridge can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in the locations where people live, work, learn, and play. And whereas on March 15th, 2024, I, Bud Starker, signed the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge and have officially committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge has committed to a future of sustainable environmental outcomes with programs such as Sustainable Wheat Ridge and Regenerate Wheat Ridge. Now therefore I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, call upon, call upon the citizens of Wheat Ridge to join us in recognizing July 8th, 2024, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the City of Wheat Ridge, and encourage all residents to participate in community activities that support and celebrate monarch conservation. Data, this 8th day of July, 2024. And Mary, I'd like to present this to you. Have you got a few words to say?
Yes, thank you. Well, thanks again, Mayor, and City Council, and members of the public. As you mentioned, pollinators like the monarch butterfly are an integral part of our ecosystem, and they play important roles in food production and biodiversity. And they've also seen a really significantly declining population over the years, and that's largely been due to a loss of habitat. And so this is Wheat Ridge's third year participating in the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, and as part of our commitments for 2024, we're continuing to focus on education and habitat creation that will benefit not only the monarch butterfly, but other pollinators as well. And I should mention that a lot of that is in conjunction with parks, so thanks to you guys for all of your help and support in those efforts. And thank you, City Council and Mayor, and also to the members of our public for, just in general, your support for our sustainability programs and goals in Wheat Ridge. So, thank you.
Wait a minute, Mary. Photo time.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We are now at our public's right to speak during this part of our council meeting. We invite the public to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. And I don't, I have one person signed up to speak tonight, and if you would please, when I call your name, come to the podium and give us your first name, if you'd please spell your last name, and give us an address, and I'm calling for Russell Stillman.
Russell Stillman, you said spell my last name? S.T.I.L.L.M.A.N. Perfect. I was here once before. It's an honor to be here, as always. Speaking about the 1,000-foot cigarette rule for the retailers in Wheat Ridge. And once again, I would like to say that it's a noble cause, and we are all for any promotion to curb smoking and influence upon young people. However, our problem with the law, and I think with most people, from our store, we have had the chance to talk to numerous people in the City of Wheat Ridge, and I think they're all under the influence that the word retail and grandfather would apply for businesses which, which would keep the business allowed until the business ends, not the actual owner. When we gave them the reference that the business would, would no longer be saleable or able to sell, they were totally against it, because they don't want any law to drastically affect an individual or a family. And we stand by the point of if, if the word retail meant the business instead of the actual individual owner, we would still have the same results, it would just take a little longer time. And here again, noble cause, we're all for it, just not at the expense of ruining people's lives. I would like to give one more, last time I was here, I used Mayor Stark's example of the restaurant business. Today, I'd like to talk about an example of eminent domain, when the city or the government needs to improve the city and have to take property. That's a process, but the property owners are still offered a fair exchange. You know, people can move on through life, there's no lives destroyed at the expense of improvement. And that's what we would like to promote here, is, is a viable law that would benefit people, but not at the expense of destroying people's lives. So, we're going to be brief today. That's just one thing I want, I think everybody knows our stance, and I just, we just wanted to promote that idea of fairness in laws, fairness in government. We don't want to destroy anybody's lives, and the current rule that it is now, that's exactly what's going to happen, not only to my boss, who, by the way, great boss, not too many employers can say that about their boss, good man, but this is devastating to his life. His child right now is, one of his children, is learning permit and driver's education, which means the next step is college education. This cigarette law will severely undermine his opportunity to college education. Thank you very much for your time, as always, and I'd also like to promote free sodas and coffee for our police force at our store. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, and no one signed up online, so that will conclude our public's right to speak, and we will go to our first agenda item. And Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 332024, a resolution approving the assignment to the Jefferson County Housing Authority, DBA, Foothills Regional Housing, of $1,963,487 of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado's 2024 private activity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for private activity bonds, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection therewith. At issue, the City of Wheat Ridge has received an allocation of $1,963,487 for the purpose of issuing private activity bonds, PABs, in 2024 under the state ceiling imposed by the Tax Reform Act of 1987. Staff recommends assigning the city's allocation to Foothills Regional Housing, which has agreed to issue PABs for the Ives Affordable Housing Project at the corner of 44th and Wadsworth Boulevard.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution to the council. It is a public hearing. It is not prejudicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We have Amy Case, the Deputy CEO of Foothills Regional Housing, here this evening to give a quick, brief verbal presentation.
Amy, Ms. Case.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and members of council. My name's Amy Case Miranda. As Patrick said, I'm the Deputy CEO of the Jefferson County Housing Authority. The Jefferson County Housing Authority, like all public housing authorities, has a unique role to play in private activity bonds. We are a qualified issuer under state and federal law, and we have the ability to carry forward up to three years of bond cap. Without an issuer or an assignment, your bond cap at the end of the year, actually after September 15th, end of the allocation period, would expire. So this is a public resource that we want to preserve and reinvest in the community of Wheat Ridge. Quick, quick, sort of one-on-one, if anyone's not familiar with private activity bonds, the federal government gives communities an allowance per person, per resident of the community, and that is an allowance for the ability to issue tax-exempt debt. It has to be partnered between a qualified issuer, like the housing authority, and a private activity with private investments. This is a great fit for projects like the Ives, because we develop and we acquire the tax credits for the equity portion of the project financing, but we also have to have debt, we also have to have a mortgage, tax credit equity doesn't cover it all. By having the bond cap, we can issue that debt at a reduced interest rate, putting less pressure on the operations of the project and the long-term affordability of the project. So this is a really important, well, and it's also required by federal law to get these tax credits, we also have to pair it with PABs. So it works well together, but it's really not optional either. We're very proud of the Ives One. If you've driven by there, I hope you're as pleased to see how lovely that property is, as we are proud of the work we've done and the families we're serving and housing there now. And I'm happy to answer any questions and would ask for your support of the assignment of your 1.9 million in 2024 bond cap, volume cap.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we go to questions of council, I will invite the members of the public to speak. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, and we have no one joining us online, so we will go to questions from council, in this case, or staff. Any questions? Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you. Is there a specific project or, or part of the project that you're going to use these funds for?
The intent is the Ives Phase Two, which will involve the bank building that you all, you've also partnered with us on acquiring.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and Ms. Case, if I could just kind of follow up on that question. In the letter that you sent to the city back a couple of weeks ago, you said that you have another application going in in August, and the, at this point, your public activity bonds will reach, are aiming for 5.1 million. And I guess my question is, what, where are you on development of this project now? I mean, if you go by there, you see the first stage is already finished and occupied, and the second part, the old buildings are still there, and are there drawings in place, or what?
Yes, we do have, I wouldn't, they're not full schematic drawings, they're an application package level of drawings and design. Already been working with city staff on what is going to be possible and desirable on that site. We are looking right now at about 79 or 80 units of housing, different than Phase One of the Ives. This would be a mix of one, twos, and three-bedroom units, so we can do a little more family housing on this site. Ives is all one-bedrooms, the Ives One. So, you know, we're looking at this as kind of a housing campus, you know, for different demographics and income levels. We'll probably have maximum incomes for the units that range all the way from 30 to 70% of the area median income, so true workforce, and also some ability with our vouchers to house some really deeply vulnerable residents.
And can you give me just a sense of how that building's going to look? Two stories, four stories? How big will it be?
So it's, it's three on top of parking.
Three on top of parking?
Yeah, three on top of parking. Well, the first floor is some parking, some tuck-under, as well as, but, but those plans will all, nothing has been through the planning or permitting process. City staff will still have to review the site plan for approval, the building permitting process, you know, consistency with the zoning and, and all of that. So I hate to hesitate, or I hate to say, oh, it's exactly like this, because it's not even approved yet. But I will say that it is being, we're working with the same architect, the same land use planner, and the same general contractor, so the idea is absolutely that it will have aesthetics consistent with the Ives One.
That's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any further questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution number 332024, a resolution approving the assignment to the Jefferson County Housing Authority, DBA, Foothills Regional Housing, of $1,963,487 of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado's 2024 private activity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for private activity bonds, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection therewith. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the Deputy Manager please support the council? Seeing none, will the Deputy Manager please pull the council?
Mayor, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Case, thank you for being here. Okay, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Two. Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number twelve dash two zero two four, an ordinance amending chapters one and thirteen of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the acceptance of electronic signatures. At issue, the city's current Code of Laws does not address the use and acceptance of electronic signatures for summonses issued by the Wheat Ridge Police Department. However, the Wheat Ridge Police Department is planning to implement the use of electronic summonses by August twenty twenty-four. To match those practices of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, the enclosed ordinance amends current regulations to allow the municipal court to accept electronic signatures for all types of summonses issued by the Wheat Ridge Police Department.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number twelve dash two zero two four, an ordinance amending chapters one and thirteen of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the acceptance of electronic signatures on first reading. Order published. Public hearing set for Monday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
We have a motion and a second. Will the Deputy Mayor please pull the council? Deputy Man, I guess I'm.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the promotion, Mayor.
Thank you. It's hereby rescinded. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Three. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve a contract amendment with Architerra Group for construction and support services for the Green at Thirty-Eighth Project in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand dollars and eight hundred fifty-five. At issue, the Architerra Group was hired by the city in July twenty twenty-two to prepare final design documents for the Green at Thirty-Eighth Project. Since that time, city staff and members of the Architerra Group have worked extensively with the Jefferson County School District and other stakeholders to develop two phases to the project in order to minimize impacts to the adjacent school, Stevens Elementary. Phase One, the parking lot project, is currently underway, and Phase Two, the park site, is scheduled to begin construction in August twenty twenty-four. A contract amendment with the Architerra Group in the amount of one hundred eleven eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars is being requested to provide coordination, support, and assistance during the construction phase.
Thank you. This will be a, um, a resolution of the council or a motion to council. Um, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We have nothing, um, to add, just excited that this is moving forward.
Okay.
And, uh, but we do have Karen and Maria here, um, and myself to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Uh, I, I, I don't have any members of the public signed up to speak on this item, so I will open it up to, uh, questions from council on this item. While we're talking about the Green on Thirty-Eighth, and I saw machinery happening out there this morning, uh, give us a little rundown.
Sure. Um, as the, uh, issue statement, um, read this evening, they are, um, working on Phase One of the, uh, project, which is the parking lot, new parking lot for Stevens Elementary. Um, hoping that will be done before school starts. Um, there's a lot, a lot of work to make that happen. There's a lot of utilities underground that need to be moved and fiber that needs to be moved, but, um, they, uh, they believe they can have it done by the first of August. So, um, we, uh, they will roll right into the, uh, park portion, um, once the parking lot's done, and, um, they're hoping that be done about this time next year. So excited.
Thank you. All right, there's no more questions. Uh, will the, um, acting clerk please pull the council? Oh, I guess we need a motion. Now, Mr. Counselor Ohm, would you please provide a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a contract amendment with the Architerra Group for construction and support services for the Green at Thirty-Eighth Project in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver? Or, Ms. Counselor Hoppe? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I again just want to thank council for supporting this project. It's been a long time coming, and I'm really looking forward to it being finished.
All right. Now, would the clerk please pull the council?
Mayor, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Four. Counselor Snell, would you please introduce the side?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to. This is Resolution Number three four dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution amending the twenty twenty-four housing fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding an inclusionary housing economic analysis. Staff is in the process of procuring a consultant to complete an economic analysis of the impact of an inclusionary housing ordinance. The twenty twenty-four housing, but, housing fund budget currently includes twenty thousand dollars for this task. Upon reaching out to four qualified consultants, two have since replied that the budget of twenty thousand dollars is not adequate to complete the analysis. Therefore, staff is requesting a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from the housing fund budget, undesi- undesignated reserves to fund those professional services.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Uh, Mr. Goff, do we have any further staff presentation on this?
Just that, uh, staff, uh, briefed council on this about a month ago, um, when Terry Ware came and gave an update on the inclusionary, um, housing proposal. Um, and, um, this, this takes it to the next step to do this analysis that, uh, we requested.
Very good. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this. Are there questions from council? Uh, Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, so it, it indicate that, um, two of the four consultants that were, uh, reached out, she said that twenty thousand wasn't enough. Did they indicate that forty thousand would be or what do you think the total cost would be?
I don't think it will be as high as forty. Um, I think part of the responses was based both on, um, budget and those consultants' schedules. So, uh, after the packet was prepared, we did hear back from one of the other agencies who thinks they'd be able to do it within twenty, but we need to discuss the scope and fee a little further. So we think we'll need a little more, but probably not the full forty.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Counselor Snell, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number thirty-four dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution amending the twenty twenty-four housing fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding an inclusionary housing economic analysis.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor, by Mayor Protim Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the acting clerk please pull the council?
Mayor, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes our business items tonight. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
I have nothing else this evening, thank you.
Okay. Um, we have, uh, our city attorney online. Um, Mr. Goff, we hope you're doing, uh, doing well, as well as can be expected, and hope for a quick recovery. Do you have anything for us tonight?
I don't, and I appreciate, though, your indulgence in letting me zoom into this meeting, but I'll look forward to seeing you at the next one in person.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now go to, uh, elected officials' matters, and let's start with Counselor Hulteen, who's joining us online.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if it's not too late, I had actually raised my hand with a question on the last item.
I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I am curious if we don't, excuse me, if we don't need the full forty, would the un, um, expended funds go back into the housing fund?
Correct. The funds will stay within the housing budget, um, fund, so they will, they'll just go back into the reserves.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was prioritized and it wasn't going into the consultancy. Um, thank you. Um, other than that, uh, I actually, the only thing I have tonight, other than just continuing to enjoy Happiness Gardens, um, I had a couple constituents call out, call me with questions about Wadsworth, and if Maria is in the room still, um, I'm wondering if, uh, there could be just a quick update on the project and how it's looking on its schedule. Uh, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, council member. Yeah, um, we're making really good progress. The weather has been great. So as you've probably recently seen, uh, we're moving, we've split traffic as you're going southbound from approximately I seventy, and you're forced to choose a lane southbound, and that's to allow the contractor to build basically the middle section and complete that with, uh, concrete. Pretty much, um, when they're done with that, which will probably be, they're going to keep that, uh, link, lane division up for another two weeks or so. But after that, then, uh, pretty much all of the paving north of Forty-Fourth Avenue will be completed. So we'll, uh, get traffic back to normal. We're anticipating also, uh, moving further south with the, the paving, and probably sometime in late August, we'll be, uh, putting all northbound traffic on the new concrete going northbound, all the way from the south end of the project, all the way to the north. So that's going to be a huge milestone, and, um, we're excited about that. You've also probably seen one of the panels going up on the noise wall at, near the south end of the project. And so we're working through some of the design details on that. That was just a sample panel that was put up. So we're looking at that, making sure that the, the coatings and the texture is correct before we put up all the rest of them. And, um, other than that, yeah, uh, people have been very responsive in terms of, uh, adapting to the traffic change and patterns out there. We're also preparing for Carnation Festival, um, to make sure that none of the construction impacts, impacts the festival and vice versa. And then, uh, finally, we're working, we're started today, as a matter of fact, to open up the rear entrance, if you will, to the shopping center near Forty-third and Vance. So this will allow people who are traveling westbound on Forty-Fourth Avenue to turn at the signal at Vance Street and Forty-Fourth and be able to access to First Bank, to, um, the restaurants there, as well as get into the shopping center. So I know that's been a, a pretty significant traffic pattern change for folks, especially those on the north side of Forty-Fourth Avenue, where they're not able to make that left, uh, behind First Bank anymore. So this will open that up. We'll have a VMS board, a very bold message board out there to show people how to do that or tell them of that in advance. Um, but overall, I think we're staying on schedule. We have had some additional utility conflicts at Thirty-Eighth Avenue, west of Wadsworth, that we're dealing with, with, uh, some of our utility partners. But other than that, uh, it's been pretty smooth sailing.
Awesome. I appreciate that update, and, uh, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but when you work your way towards that full opening of northbound Wadsworth on the new, excuse me, the new pavement, um, it'd be really great to revisit the possibility of opening up the multi-use path that's on the east side there that I know is getting used, um, is really lovely. Uh, and I'm going to jump off because there's a helicopter over my house right now. So thank you for the update, Maria.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Snell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Um, it's been a while, but, uh, Ridge Fest was great, um, all the way back in June. Um, I, uh, got to be at Ridge Fest. I know a lot of us were there, and I just wanted to commend Local Works and all the volunteers and everyone, really, that was a part of that event. It was, it was fantastic. Um, I hate that the last band got cut off, and I hate that we had hail and weather, but, um, wonderful event. It was, it was great. Uh, I think it was very well-received being in, at Anderson Park. Um, so just kudos to everyone who worked so hard on that. It was, it was a good time and really good for our community, I think. Um, in other news, I'm happy to celebrate Parks and Rec Month. I got to spend some time at Anderson Pool over the weekend, and, uh, just excellent in all, every regard. Um, I saw some, um, lifeguards doing a fantastic job of having kids direct energy in a different way rather than running on the deck. Um, and, um, just excellent, excellent communication by that team. I just, nothing but kudos to, to them. Um, and then we are so lucky to have such a great pool in our community. Um, and on that, it's hot outside. It's going to get hotter this week, so I just encourage everyone to please be safe with the heat, and, um, if you're going to walk your pups, please walk them early in the morning. Um, and everyone be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so it's been a little while. I hope everybody enjoyed their Independence Day holiday. We went right next door to Arvada and enjoyed their fireworks. It was a great show. Um, and speaking of fireworks, although Wheat Ridge does not have it for July fourth, we do have it for the Carnation Festival, both Friday and Saturday night again this year, so we invite everybody to come and enjoy that on August ninth, tenth, and eleventh. Um, parade registration is still open until the end of July, uh, so please get registered if you would like to walk in the parade. Um, huge shout-out to Local Works and Page, um, for Ridge Fest. It seems like it was quite a long time ago, but, uh, they certainly made the best of, um, bad weather. Uh, my kids really enjoyed going out onto the basketball court at Anderson Park and, um, puddle jumping, so they were nice and wet on the walk home. Um, and speaking of Local Works, they have their first, uh, Clear Creek Baker Space mural community paint event, um, this Saturday from nine to two. So that's at the Clear Creek Baker Space off Forty-Fourth and Field. Uh, that's been a wonderful addition to District Four. We're really happy to have them. Uh, loved that Ridge Fest was at Anderson Park, and that is Parks and Rec Month. Uh, we really enjoy walking over to Anderson Park, um, and my kids have enjoyed the sun camp this year, which is a great amenity for our kiddos. Um, and just kudos to, uh, Karen and her team. I really appreciate that you came up and you recognize several members of your team and kind of gave us an inside glimpse as to the work that they do as individuals that make the whole part happen. Um, I think we have a great Parks and Rec team. You got, you guys have been securing several grants and just doing a phenomenal job at programming and offering great amenities to our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would also like to acknowledge the hundreds of people that came by Ridge Fest, uh, it's almost two weeks ago now. Um, as one of the volunteers, uh, I can say that there was a lot of enthusiasm. People were very, very happy to, to, uh, to participate, to buy the beer tokens, and they were moving out quicker than we could, than, than we could roll them out. So, um, uh, I was also fortunate in that my volunteer shift ended about five minutes before the rain started. So, so when I got home, I got to sit in my living room and look out the window. Uh, and, and I'd also like to, uh, reinforce what, uh, Counselman Dozeman just said about the paint-by-number thing. No experience needed. You don't have to be a painter. You don't have to, uh, do anything other than paint by numbers. That should be fun. You can go to, uh, the calendar page at localworks.org to find more.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too attended the, uh, Local Works, the Ridge Fest down at Anderson Park, and, uh, I noticed it was probably about double since the last time I saw it. So it was a very, very good turnout. Um, we can't control the weather, so, you know, I think, I think everybody kind of dealt with it, and I also wanted to, I, I want to thank the, the whole staff at Local Works. Everybody did a great job, you know, trying to help people out, um, telling people to come into their space to try to stay dry. And I also wanted to thank, give a shout-out to the Wheat Ridge Police Department. They came by and, and told everybody, you know, a, a, after everything's kind of dried off, that get ready for round two, and we should probably all head out, and, and, uh, I was grateful when I got home that, yes, the round two did come, um, and I was, I was safe at home. Uh, the other things I want to mention is, um, uh, once you kind of understand what that, that milkweed looks like, you see it everywhere. I see it in my neighborhood. I see it when I'm on the, uh, Clear Creek Trail, when I'm biking, everywhere. Um, and I haven't seen the butterflies yet, but there's plenty of milkweeds this year everywhere I look. Um, and so, uh, just to, you know, everybody just kind of be conscious, you know, when we're spraying our pesticides that, you know, to identify this is, I think it's kind of less of a weed. I know it, I know it can, uh, kind of spread, but, um, just be, be conscious of what you're spraying, um, that these are really needed for our, for Wheat Ridge. Um, and also, uh, I, I had to remind a neighbor tonight, um, about water conservation. She was trying to get something watered, and I said, you know, you're, the water's just going everywhere because it's so hot out. Just wait till after six, and you'll, you'll get more water on the ground instead of in the air. So, um, it's going to be hot out, and I encourage everybody to, you know, water after six PM. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too had a great time at Ridge Fest, uh, but before that, I just wanted to thank Karen and her crew for coming out and helping the police and the mayor and just everybody who came and walked the goats. Um, we had a great time, and, um, and everybody's over there, and the, the, the grass has actually gone down a bit in the last week. Um, so I just want to thank everybody for their support. It's been fantastic. And just a note on milkweed. Milkweed, great for monarchs, not for grazing animals, so don't feed the goats any goat milkweed, please. Um, yeah, and Ridge Fest was fantastic. I, I didn't work at Ridge Fest. I went and drank beer and bought art, so the, uh, the hail actually caused me to spend So the, the hail actually caused me to spend more money. So thank you.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Hoppe?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to thank Counselor Weaver and Five Fridges Farm and Karen and everybody who participated in the goat parade. The other day was a lot of fun and you haven't lived until you've walked goats over, over a distance. They're interesting animals, pretty cool. And I will say, one of the things that I loved about this weekend was getting a chance just to kind of walk the neighborhood early in the morning, late at night and, or not late at night, but later in the evenings and stuff. It's something I don't get to do because I work in the evenings a lot. But there are so many people at Lewis Meadows Park now because the goats are back. Just the, the loop, we call it the goat loop around there. Just it's, it's amazing to see the neighbors get out there and, and the goats really bring that neighborhood together. So thank you to Parks and Rec and Five Fridges Farm. Ridge Fest was a blast the other day as well, as, as both a business owner who was a vendor there and, and a community member who spent a lot of time there. It was a lot of fun. And one of the cool things that my kids got, they stopped by the booth, the rooted and fun booth, but also the Let's Talk booth. And the other day I was walking out the door and my son winged his sister in the head with one of the little frisbees, the Let's Talk frisbees. And he goes, why we? Do you remember when we walked up to that booth the other day and put stickers on the things? I think that, I really think that the bike safety was the most important thing to me. And I was like, whoa, like where did that come from? So it's just really cool. I think that, that, that education is really, really important. It's, it's really helpful to educate our community, especially our young like that. So I also want to give a shout out to Paige and, and her team over there at Local Works and, and the police officers and, and all the people who were involved in putting Ridge Fest on. It was amazing. One of the cool things that I loved about it was it spotlighted all of our local businesses. So if you're getting a beer, it was from a local company. If you were buying something, it was from a local artist or a local company. And we have some amazing businesses in Wheat Ridge and it's great to have Local Works and, and the city spotlighting those businesses. So if you can find it, find it by Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome back, everyone. I hope everyone had a great Independence Day holiday. We certainly did and it's great to be back, back sort of refreshed. Great, really appreciate Amanda Weaver and Five Fridges Farm for having such a, such an inviting and, and delightful sort of sidelight in our, in our city. That's, that's really enjoyable to walk the goats and have them, have them be part of our community. We talked earlier about the parks, the parks that we have in Wheat Ridge. We really have great parks. I mean, we have, we have so many great opportunities in the park, lots of recreational activities and lots of nature out there. We've got a great parks department. I want to thank Director O'Donnell, Karen and her team for coming in tonight and all the folks who couldn't make it tonight. They really keep it, keep it fresh and keep it clean and keep it really a nice, nice amenity to happen in our, in our community. I want to thank Mary Hester for being here and for her work and also our parks folks because you do see milkweed and other, you know, plants around that help pollinate. So that's very important in our community. And I've been seeing more, more butterflies and, and, you know, maybe they're, maybe they're the moss, but, but they flit around anyway, so it's great to have them here. This Saturday is second Saturday in the month and I'm going to have, be having coffee at 9:00 o'clock at Vanola's Italian Restaurant on 38th Avenue. If you want to come by and join us for a cup of coffee, we'd love to have you and some conversation. Let's see, the last thing on my list before we kind of start wrapping it up is Intermountain Health is pleased to be opening in August. On August 3rd, their new hospital at Clear Creek Crossing and we're really excited to have them here. There is a ribbon cutting for the public at Lutheran Hospital on Saturday, July 20th at about 8:30 in the morning. So if you want to come out there and, and help us with the ribbon cutting and take a look around the hospital, I think you'll be really impressed with that facility and we really want to welcome them to Wheat Ridge. That's, that's all that I have except to remind everyone to please drive slowly and safely through our community. It's beautiful out there. We want everybody to get home safely at night. So if there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned and we will be back here next week in a study session. Right, Mr. Goff? Getting my calendars coordinated? Okay, thank you all and thanks for joining us. We stand adjourned.